Today's episode is brought to you by DeSanto Propane. DeSanto Propane is four generations strong as a trustworthy, family-owned business with unmatched customer service. Go online at de santopropane.com for more info or call toll-free at 1-800-752-4574. Since 1937, the difference has been DeSanto Propane. Today, we continue our series previewing local elections across the Finger Lakes by catching up with one of the candidates running for Geneva City Council. Will Wolf joins me in studio. Will, thanks for being here.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
So let's get the easy one out of the way. Why are you running?
So my journey as a prospective council member for Geneva really started about 10 years ago when I first moved to the city. So I came to Geneva like most young people, not really sure how I was going to fit into the community, whether or not I was going to be here a while. And over the last 10 years, I actually really fell in love with Geneva and I realized how important it was to really double down and give back to the community that I fell in love with. So it was a slow process. I got involved in the Board of Ethical Review. I also got involved in the Police Review Board. Those are my first little baby steps towards being on the bigger stage of city council. But when I saw the opportunity had arisen, figured it was a good time to take that up.
Since you mentioned it, when you think about Geneva 10 years ago versus Geneva today, what stands out to you as maybe a couple of the bigger things that have just changed for better or worse?
So I moved from Lafayette Street, just by Cherry Street, excuse me, which is right by the hospital there. Right around 2011, or 2012 perhaps, I moved to Exchange Street. So I was in the heart of where I think a lot of people think of the sort of Renaissance of Geneva most recently. Just a walk away from Linden Street, for example, which has seen its fair share of revitalization luckily. And that's the thing I think of most really is how downtown changed from the place with your run-of-the-mill small-town shops to really having some personality, to the point where now people come from New York City and say, wow, you have a slice of New York City's best qualities in the middle of an agricultural hub. That's a really nice mix.
When you are campaigning now, what are you hearing from voters as maybe a couple, two, three of the biggest issues that stand out to them?
Sure. So Ward 5 is sort of uniquely rental-heavy. So that definitely impacts what people are concerned about. The discussion of property tax, for example, is very different to renters than it is to property owners. They know that it translates to rent, but the alleviation of those taxes being so high doesn't equate to lower rent. So that's not lost on a lot of constituents on Ward 5. So the concern is affordable housing, whether or not that is impacted by the property tax. Being able to live in town and have a job in town, or in the city, I guess in this case, is very important to people. I find that a lot of the younger people at Ward 5 especially are concerned about being priced out of the city over time. And they're mostly people who work locally. So we're essentially looking at losing a large part of our workforce in the local shops that we all love if we don't deal with that. But flooding is also a huge concern. You can imagine, I live actually right next to the fire departments on Geneva Street and Genesee Street. Property opens up to both streets, but the flood comes right through basically my driveway, the fire department's entire property, and further down as you go towards the hospital. So that's obviously on the forefront of a lot of people's minds across the city. But when your downtown is flooding to the point that some of your most beloved businesses are being flooded out, you really have a serious problem that can't be postponed any further. That's its own kind of worms to solve certainly, but it is a high priority. And then, I would say, the lake property being developed or not is another hot-button issue. There's no secret that the lakefront is our largest piece of continuous green space in the city. It's an asset. We have things like the Lake Trout Capital Claim that we always love to capitalize on. We have a great property for it. And I think there's a lot of concerns about the Marina Plan coming through. I know there's recently been some new talks about maybe postponing it for more studies, which I think would be a wise choice. Not to go too far into that rabbit hole, but there are a lot of studies that are showing the PFA count, which is like the forever chemicals in the lake, is already quite high. And evidence suggests that a Marina project will only really exacerbate that. And so that's a real big concern. I mean, we don't want to have a lake that we can look at but not go into. Sort of doesn't really serve as purpose if we kill off all the trout or affect them to the point where they're not an actual source of food for people. And I would like to see that be an initiative along the entire lake, honestly. I mean, it's a community effort to keep the lake clean. If Geneva alone is the one focused on it, it's really not going to make a difference. But we can set an example and lean into the fact that that's already something we pride ourselves on.
So I want to get into all of those issues a little more. I'm glad you hit all of them, but let's start with the first one you mentioned, which is you live in a rent-heavy ward. How much of a concern is that to you that there is such a density of rental properties in the city? And how that doesn't always necessarily translate to folks who are able to buy a home and become a property owner in the city?
Yeah. I remember when RJ did his interview about a week ago now, he did touch on the fact, people, especially in my age group, I'm 32. A lot of us don't actually think of the prospect of owning a house. That's already been sort of set outside of our sights for a lot of people in my age group. And I guess my perspective on the rental issue is that it's fine to have rental properties. It seems like especially in a city like downtown, you want density. That only comes from rentals. I mean, people aren't going to be able to achieve that with privately-owned property. But they do need to be affordable. And like I said before, and I know RJ touched on this too, we don't want the rental properties to be priced so high that you can't actually live in the city and then work at any of the places in walking distance. That's one thing I will say. When I first moved onto Exchange Street, I had a rent that was about $650. And that was actually affordable, working at a local bar, or I worked at Joe's Hots for a while. And that was a living that I could live off of, at least at that age, and with, you know, no prospects of owning property. I could at least get by comfortably. And that felt good that I could not have a car and get to everything I needed in Geneva and be able to make a reasonable living. Now my rent is almost twice that. And I'm lucky that we unionized at my job recently to get better wages, or it would have been a pretty dicey prospect, living in Geneva for the next three years. That really scares me more than anything, although there are plenty of vacant properties that could be utilized better by the city through stricter code enforcement and proper zoning, or more creative zoning, I should say. That could also open up abilities for people who do want to stay in the city to buy a property and truly invest in the community like that.
How much of a concern is the stake that tourism plays in our overall economy? How much does that enter into that conversation when you're talking to folks who work? Because you're painting a picture basically where something that I've said over and over again is service workers are being priced out of. And that's predominantly what the Finger Lakes Tourism Machine is all about.
Absolutely.
You have business owners, but that population is very small by comparison to the literal thousands and thousands who make up the, I don't want to call it the minimum wage job, but the low-wage jobs by comparison. How much of that is a viability issue for a city like Geneva that is so reliant on tourism as being an economic driver for it?
I think it's huge. And we have to remember that the tourist season is a season too. So if we're not taking care of the people that stay throughout the winters, and I know lately we've had much more of a mild winter than we may be used to, but it can look pretty desolate in Geneva on a snowy day. You don't see a lot of cars in downtown, and that means that the people who can afford to live in downtown are doing what they can to get by. But I mean, bars cut their hours. A lot of the service industry drops its volume. Just by nature, the college kids go home for the holidays. It can get pretty empty. And I think we would do better to remember the people who stay here and get us through the winter. And part of that is making sure that our rent is affordable even for when the traffic dips in Geneva. It's really no secret to the people who work in the industry though, that we rely on the tourism. So it's not really an us versus them, but it's finding a way to coexist in a good balance rather than leaning too far into tourism needs without thinking about the people who support the industry.
Affordability. Economic development. When somebody says to you, what is successful economic development? What does successful economic development look like to you in the city of Geneva?
So about, I think it was about seven years ago, I think it was 2013 was the last time we got a really good review of our comprehensive plan that came out. That really hit on a lot of good, I guess you could say, variables to determine if something is viable economic development. It's easy to think of short-term solutions to things, you know, we can give tax cuts to big industries to try to entice them in. But at the end of the day, all of those industries operate on a solid community base. And if, again, if you're scaring out all the workers or pricing out all of the people who are going to work at those industries, you're not actually going to be creating an environment that's sustainable in five years, 10 years. The comprehensive plan was very clear about that, and it needs to be updated certainly. But I think we've seen like the last city council has sort of strayed away from even really referencing it. You almost like wouldn't know that it exists if you pay attention to how their conduct has been, their focus has been sort of geared towards whatever the newest emotional hot-button issue is going to be for them. But back to the point, the comprehensive plan really does give a good outline for that. And what it comes down to is you take care of the community in a holistic way and everything else will follow. Kind of like the Wayne's World 2 concept, you build it, they will come. You build a good community and then things want to be there in that community. And that's really what it comes down to.
And it doesn't always just mean physical development. It means building an actual community.
Yep.
Flooding. You mentioned flooding, obviously on your street, literally. We're hearing more and more and seeing more and more of these quote-unquote "record-breaking" weather events.
Yeah.
Obviously, there are some short-term things that the city probably needs to do to address flooding. But when you think about this as a long-term issue, because clearly this is not something that's going away, how would you like to see city council approach infrastructure issues related to these extreme weather events that are probably going to continue increasing in frequency?
Sure. So the first thing I'd love to see is being more proactive. Working with the data provided by FEMA and other interest groups in the area that are keeping tabs on the ecological impacts of climate change in the area, and really understanding what kind of grants are available. Because let's be honest, Geneva City budget is not particularly fat. And so we don't have a lot of room to work with, and this is an issue we can't just postpone till our coffers are, you know, overflowing. So it has to be something where we seek outside help, but that does also exist. And I think rather than trying to look for solutions every rainy season when our streets are already flooding, it should be a process that we're starting now as we go into the cold seasons. And we remember that it's going to be a problem next summer. It's not if there's another flood next summer, it's how many. And if we'll get by another season without something very serious happening with the infrastructure. And especially when you think about it going through the fire department properties. I mean, we want to talk about supporting public safety and those services. I think making sure that the fire departments don't get flooded out is probably a pretty good place to start.
How much of it is also a messaging challenge where, you know, when you're talking about infrastructure, it's not like you can go to sleep one day and wake up the next day and all of the problems are solved. These are long-term projects. How much of it is just constant messaging to residents that, hey, we haven't forgotten, we're working on X, Y, and Z, and making sure that that's a part of the plan throughout?
Yeah. I think city council in general should be doing more to address issues that are obviously on the minds of people. Even if it's just a courtesy, I guess you could say shout-out, not to be a millennial about it. But, you know, a little nod to the fact that we do have flooding on our radar. It's not that we forget in the off-season. Obviously, city council can't solve all problems all the time in two days. So there are going to be times where it's going to be a frustrating window of time while plans are being sorted out. But I think acknowledging that more and making sure that people understand that there's a slow process to anything in government. I mean, it's a trope that bureaucracy just bogs down the process. So it is important to remind people of that. They're not going to elect a new city council in November and then see results in December. This is bottom line. That's just not a realistic outcome, and I think it is important to remember that.
Let's talk a little more about the fire and EMS thing, because I think there's two sides of that. One side of it that I think doesn't get quite enough talk is just the lack of volunteers, the declining numbers, and the challenges that that will pose to communities like Geneva long-term. Geneva seems to be in a pretty good situation right now with its fire and EMS service, how it's covered. But when you think about long-term, like the five-to-10-year trajectory, what sticks out to you as a concern and how might that best be alleviated with some of those stressors across the whole space?
Yeah. I mean, there's definitely a lot to unpack there. So one issue is making sure that we're cultivating a good relationship between the police department specifically and the people that they're policing. But that's also not lost on either side of that argument. I did two ride-alongs before the primary election with different officers. That was a great experience. I don't know if they want to be named, so I won't, but they were, it was a great experience with both of them. And one common thread I heard was that they're aware of the fact that overpolicing will actually affect that relationship, being, you know, too nitpicky about what they're going after. Like, it's not, there's this perception that the police are sort of this heavy-handed entity all the time, that there's no humanity involved. And I will say, for what it's worth in my ride-alongs, it's, the forefront of their mind is we don't want to go to calls where people hate us. That's counterintuitive to our job. So I think doing more to kind of illustrate that that is also a priority and that's on their minds would be helpful. But there's also parts of previous efforts like the Community Compact that did do a lot of work until around the time the COVID shut everything down. And in light of the Police Review Board that also ended up going away, I think the interest in both concepts sort of dwindled to the point it's not on most people's radar. But the Community Compact did a lot of good work, including kind of revising the protocols that the police were using for escalation of force and stuff like that. And I would love to see that. It had buy-ins from both parties, if you will, not political parties, but the police side of things as well as the citizen side of things. And I think that was a great effort to really bring people together on the issue. As far as funding, that's a different issue, and I think we're going to have to go outside of our tax base realistically if we're going to keep supporting both of our public service safety groups, the fire department and the police department. I think realistically, there are going to be needs that the city can't support just on their tax base alone. And that doesn't mean that they shouldn't get that funding, but the grants are going to require sort of a closer look at what is and isn't required too. So there's going to be some give and take, but I think being critical of throwing money at either service is different than saying that we don't need to fund them. And that seemed to be one message that didn't quite land properly during the primary, I noticed. I am by no means advocating of defunding or underfunding either department. I think there just has to be a fiscal responsibility to where any money is going. And realistically, that involves a lot of people probably getting heavily scrutinized budget versus what they're hoping for. That's just how business works, and the city has to run like a business to be efficient, so.
Yeah. Shared services, kind of on the fringe of what you're discussing, right? And what you're talking about right now is shared services. How much of that involves partnering with some of the municipalities around the city to help perhaps spread out some of the costs that comes along with having these services since they are, through mutual aid and other endeavors, branching out beyond just the city confines itself?
Yeah. I think that's going to be an integral part of how we go forward with finding proper funding that is both functional for the departments in question and the community that they serve. And I mean, it's important to remember, we think of Geneva as a community, but it's also a community on a broader stage, which is the Finger Lakes. And we tend to go back and forth a lot with helping the surrounding communities, and this needs to be just one more facet of that relationship with the county. And we're in an interesting spot too, where Seneca County is right on our border. So, you know, I don't know what kind of options might be viable across county lines, but even that sort of thing would be worth exploring. I think we're at a point where we need to keep our minds open to a lot of options. And certainly, working as a broader community is probably going to be the trajectory we have to look at.
We talked a little bit about housing, rental, the rental issue earlier. But whether you're talking about median housing stock or senior housing availability, all three of those issues, including rent pricing, are heavy issues across the entire region. Ontario County just finished its housing study, 141 pages of good information. What role would you like to see now that the county is moving forward and will probably be coming up with some legislative solutions here sooner than later? How would you like to see a city council involved in that countywide issue? And what opportunities do you think exist within the city itself to, you know, enhance housing overall?
Yeah. So on a county scale, I think it's important that Geneva, as one of the larger municipalities in the county, really steps forward and sort of represents itself as a good place to use as a metric. We have this heavy tourist industry, this sort of failing housing market and affordable housing. And we are going to sort of be a canary in the coal mines, I imagine, for the Finger Lakes, that communities that rely on the tourism and don't support their tourist supporters are going to have issues as we go forward. And housing is a huge part of where that breaks down. I'd like to see city council doing more to advocate on a county level that that is the reality that we're already seeing sort of come to fruition. I mean, there's a threshold of unemployment that you, once you hit, is very hard to dig yourself out of. And unemployment comes also from not being able to afford housing. I mean, struggles that come along with not being able to make rent affect your work ability. And eventually, that affects if you even have a job. So it's just really nasty cycle. There's a lot of pieces to it. But advocating clearly that we are a great place to start if the county wants to start really thinking about how to solve housing. You know, look at Geneva.
Yeah. And in light of the fact that I've had multiple folks in here who are running for very selected offices around Geneva, say Geneva is essentially the capital of the Finger Lakes region. Quite a stark dichotomy there with that situation and then also being the center, the hub of the entire region.
Absolutely.
Last month, we saw the report that forecasted 40% increase in seniors living in the Finger Lakes by 2040. All other age groups, including the one you and I sit in here, declining by 7% to 14% in that same timeframe. When you think about what Geneva looks like moving forward, how much of a concern are those numbers in relation to that?
Yeah. So when I hear those figures, I think of two things. The first is we obviously need to find ways to help the seniors that want to age in place do that with services that will sort of assist with that. Because I don't think that there are a lot of parts in Geneva where they can do that realistically for too long. So that is one issue that needs to be addressed. But the other one is anytime you see the younger demographics going down in their count, that's bad for a community. Those are the people that are doing the work, as we've been talking about, on the front line, so to speak. So when we don't have a growing population of younger people in the city, we have to ask ourselves, why is that? Where is that coming from and how do we fix that? This actually kind of ties into a pet project of mine specifically, which has been the fact that Geneva and Ontario County as a whole really hasn't devised a plan to sort of address the cannabis industry that's up and coming. That's a huge tax revenue. There's, so currently, there's the, I forget the exact definition for the acronym, but it's CUARD, which is basically the board that is involved in the recreational use of cannabis and that whole industry from New York. One of the things that they've worked on is that there should be a 4% tax applied to all the licensed dispensaries. 3% of that goes to the municipality, 1% to the county. So the fact that we've gone this long into its legalization without really looking at that as an industry, when it can very often mirror the other industries that we've seen bloom in the region, is sort of mind-blowing to me personally. But that would be a priority of mine. And that sort of solves several things. It creates new industries, especially industries that the youth are going to be engaged with. I mean, we've seen that legalization actually drops the number of younger people that are trying marijuana for the first time. But that also has its sort of craft side of things, which Geneva specifically is sort of known for its craft breweries and its farm-to-table food. And I think having local dispensaries that are licensed properly, which so far there are none, there are caveats to that. I don't want to misrepresent any of the industry that is currently existing there. But as far as proper CUARD-certified, you can look at their list and there's none listed in Geneva. So most of them are operating perhaps on like a hemp or CBD license, which allows them to sell certain products that we would recognize as recreational cannabis, but isn't actually by legal definition under the same standards. So with sort of leaning into that industry, it also comes with intelligent sort of management of that industry. We want to make sure that they're licensed. We want to make sure that they're adhering to all the standards that should be applied to them. Because we also don't want to see our community fall into a trap of youth getting their hands on high potency products that are going to have developmental effects. Because I may be a proponent of the cannabis industry, but I'm also a proponent of it being sort of reeled in realistically. And the developmental impacts on youth are something that we can't ignore either. So I don't want to see it be a blight on the community, especially as one of the places that seems to have the largest number of current retail places in Ontario. There's probably four or five locations within the city limits that you can currently purchase cannabis products. And since none of them are licensed, there's a lot of questions about what is allowed in those products. Luckily, we have some groups that have taken their product very seriously, like Above All, which have done a lot of work in being in the forefront of that. But there are other shops that you sort of question the legitimacy, just even on face value, when you walk into the place. I'd really like to see us clean that up and then lean into that as a way to really boost our tax base. Because there's a lot of industry to be had in that area, a lot of money to be made in that industry, I should say.
How much of that, because it's interesting you say that, because I'm thinking of different development messages, economic development messages that I hear from candidates across the whole region. And it seems very forward-thinking and looking forward instead of looking at what might have worked 15 or 20 years ago. It seems like there's a split. There's still plenty of folks running for office who think that the solutions from 10, 15, 20 years ago are still going to work today. How much of this is just pushing an open mind to the community, to some of these things that maybe aren't already here or aren't already, you know, as common as, say, you know, craft beverage or, you know, restaurants or the things that people are already very synonymous with the Finger Lakes?
Yeah. It definitely is a struggle, but I would say that Geneva in particular is a very forward-thinking city, I think culturally. You look at Linden Street and the kind of businesses that even the local community does support just with their patronage. And I think it shows that Geneva is always happy to have something a little outside of the box. And it actually sort of fits the vibe of the city as a whole. So I think maybe countywide, it's a different kind of conversation. But I find a lot of people in the city are very receptive in general and also understand the value of not having unregulated industries that could lead to a lot more problems. If nothing else, sort of forcing more of these locations to get licensed properly. A, it puts them, again, like I said, on the tax roll more effectively. Because if they're licensed, there's also potency taxes. There's weight taxes. So the potency makes a big difference. And if you're not licensed, that's one thing you're getting away with is not paying on those taxes. Is they're not dictated the same way how they have to be taxed. So you're selling these wildly potent products that really could be making a lot more money for the city. So, I mean, money talks. So even if you're not a cannabis enthusiast, you have to admit, it's here, it's legal. It's an industry that's going to come through the region. How we deal with it is really the question, not if we allow it. That has passed. There is always, you know, the ability for a group to put forth the effort to make it something we don't allow in the city. But city council was able to pass the allowance of it in the first place. So I think that sends a message that Geneva as a whole would like the industry to come in, and I think we just need to start planning for that. I expect that once people start really thinking about the comparisons, you'll see we had wineries start to pop up even more that supported the industry for wine-making. We're going to have cannabis farms that will likewise start up. There's already several large grow ops in the state. But seeing the Finger Lakes become a place where those crop up and they can be craft farms where, you know, strains that are really going to be a product of love and focused by people who are just really passionate about the industry. And that will draw its own tourism too. I mean, it's And that will draw its own tourism too. I mean, it's the impact is going to be huge, I think, if we get ahead of this and actually plan.
Last question for you. When folks ask you, how are you going to keep taxes low? How do you approach that conversation and what's your answer typically?
Sure, um I do think that it's important, we kind of touched on this before, politics and government, they don't move fast. We didn't get to Geneva being overpriced in property tax overnight. Um it took multiple city council uh compositions to get there. Multiple questionable decisions, some of them should have been more obvious, some of them hindsight's twenty twenty. But realistically, um I think one of the only things that city council can do to more accurately combat that going forward is to make sure that we're not engaging in long term contracts uh with any services that we're sourcing. That's an an important one because as I believe uh Jan had pointed out in her interview, going over the taxes and the finances monthly rather than yearly gives us a much uh clearer data set to really fine tune and figure out where we're at. And um, you know, with that, we can start to make decisions that slowly put us in the right direction. But um the realistic answer is it might be more than the city council people are about to elect where those tax rates can really start to come down without sacrificing the well being of the city. And it's important to remember that while that's the goal, it won't be overnight. So um I would be wary of anyone that promises to actually nudge that number in any super meaningful dead set way. Just because at the end of the day, everything also runs on money. So we have to figure out where it's going to come from and I described it as a Jenga tower during the primary when this sort of question came up. But I mean, you want to be able to put blocks on top, but you don't want to take ones from the bottom that are going to make everything topple. So it's it's going to be a lot of work and I think having a functional city council will be a good step towards that. But um yeah, again, results won't be overnight. So patience is unfortunately another really important part of that puzzle.
Where can folks learn more about your campaign?
Yeah, so on Facebook I have uh Wolf Award Five. Uh I also have a Gmail account if anyone wants to email me directly, which is uh Wolf Four Word Five or Wolf Four Five, excuse me, spelled out, not the number. So either way, you can contact me there and find out a little bit more.
Well, thanks for the time.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
That'll do it for this edition of FLX Today. If you'd like to hear more conversations like this one, check out the show on your favorite podcast platform or subscribe to the fingerlakesone.com YouTube channel. Have a great day and we will see you next time.